Good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you all for coming tonight. Uh, we're going to start with just a brief moment of reflection. Okay, thank you. Uh, now if you would rise, uh, we're going to use in the pleasure of ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now call this meeting to order. All board members are present with the exception of Dr. Green. Tonight, we have one item on the agenda. Uh, this is a hearing, um, to both present and receive public feedback, uh, on the proposed changes to the superintendent contract. Uh, this comes about because of changes in state law a few years ago. This is the third or fourth time we've, we've done one of these, so it may seem very familiar. Um, we're going to start tonight with, uh, with the hearing with a presentation, uh, from Chuck Rudebrich, uh, on the proposed changes to the contract.
Members of the board, in the public, uh, we do have extra copies. We have thirty copies out there, uh, at the table if you want, both the summary-
Mr. Rudebrich, I'm sorry. Would you mind picking the mic up?
Thank you. The summary and the proposed contract, if you might have a hard copy. Again, as what's indicated with the changes in the law, before the board can consider adoption of a superintendent's contract, uh, it must go through a procedure of publishing a legal notice, uh, so many days prior to having a public hearing. This is the public hearing. Uh, purpose to explain, uh, the proposed changes to the contract and allow for public comment. There will be no motion by the board tonight. Uh, the board's scheduled consideration is at its next regularly scheduled meeting on December ninth. So after I speak, the only other part, uh, for public to- Excuse me. I have a frog in my throat. There are four changes to this contract. And I'm going to start in reverse order. The first change is on paragraph seven or section seven on page two of the contract. What this proposes is that, um, well, let me explain the background. When this school corporation hired Dr. Felix Chow, he had a unique, uh, life insurance program. And the contract was constructed to have a contribution to his unique, universal life insurance plan. The business office pointed that other of the interim superintendent, Dr. Etzel, and other individuals, uh, don't necessarily have that plan. And in fact, in the marketplace, it's sort of disappearing. So it's a request of the business office, and we should have done this probably with Dr. Etzel's interim contract, that there be an or clause at the option, you can either have the universal plan or some other plan, uh, with, um, the same amount. And this provision goes even further. It freezes the amount of today's dollars going forward. So it really puts a cap on it in the future. Item two is paragraph four. We have an administrative handbook provision that provides if you're employed as an administrator, you do not get any vacation days your first year. But after your one-year anniversary, you get twenty days the second year. Uh, and it talks about being in a position. So when, uh, Mr. Thompson was high school principal, uh, last school year, he would have been entitled as of July one, uh, to have twenty vacation days for fourteen, fifteen school years. But because he moved to a different position, there's some ambiguity in the administrative handbook that he possibly had entitled to it the second year. Mr. Thompson, as everybody knows, is in the second year. This provision clearly provides that, uh, he gets the twenty vacation days in fourteen, fifteen. Uh, paragraph three at the top is page two. It adds, um, that the superintendent and his stocks are entitled at their cost at the end of this contract or appointment, whenever that occurs. If they're under the age of Medicare eligibility, that they, um, have the right to participate in a health insurance plan again at their cost. We have a state law that governs most of our employees. And that state law says if you have twenty years of credible experience in any, and, uh, public employer, combination, then you are entitled to this right. There's a second prong to that provision that says ten of those years must be, uh, immediately proceeding with the same employer, meaning Anderson Community Schools. Nobody can remember the last time that Anderson has had a superintendent that has gone on for ten years. And I would suggest to you that ninety-nine percent of the superintendents in the state of Indiana, because of timing, when they become superintendent in their career and they relocate, uh, do not have that ten-year provision once recently with the school corporation. So this is something that was requested by Mr. Thompson. But quite frankly, as we looked at it, I think this is a provision that should be in a superintendent contract. Because not only for Mr. Thompson, but as we go past to the next superintendent, this is going to be important person for us to track, a candidate who has, at the end of their career, would like to finish out the superintendent role. So I view this as having, uh, impact just not on this person, but in connection with all superintendents. Uh, and I would say it's a provision, as you know, I represent several school corporations. And this is a provision that is in, uh, every one of the superintendent contracts that, uh, my, with my clients. Finally, uh, on paragraph one, there's a proposal to extend the current contract. It's tradition after a certain period of time, uh, after superintendent comes, take a look at, uh, providing some job security. In central Indiana, and with some school corporations that you're competing with, superintendents have enrolling three-year contract, which means it keeps going on. Anderson has never done that. Uh, there was a request here to consider adding two additional years, because Mr. Thompson would like to finish his career as superintendent at Anderson Community School Corporation. So those are the four changes to this contract. And now would be the opportunity to allow for public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Rudebrich. Okay, uh, we have a list of people who, uh, have, uh, signed up to speak tonight. Uh, we are going to, uh, stick with the typical, uh, rules for public comments. Uh, when you step up to the podium, we'll ask you to say your name and your address. Um, we'll be, uh, keeping to a three-minute time limit. Uh, and we also ask that, uh, people conduct themselves appropriately professionally and that this doesn't become a time for, uh, personal attacks or negativity. So, uh, first on the list is Beth Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Gale. My name is Beth Clark. I reside at twenty-three oh nine Sagamore Drive, Anderson, Indiana, four six zero one one. I am an employee of Anderson Community Schools, and unlike many of the employees you see along this row, I am also a patron. Not that you do have to be a patron, but I think it's important that we have a balance. As you are aware, board members, in May, I communicated with you my concerns regarding the selection of Terry Thompson as a superintendent. In essence, I discouraged his selection and supported my concerns with factual examples. Although a reply from a board member indicated a firm assurance that the selection process included thorough vetting, never was I, as Mr. Thompson's immediate supervisor, contacted or questioned. I don't consider that thorough vetting. The board has made a selection, and I respect that process. Subsequently, or consequently, the superintendent dramatically changed my functions in areas of responsibility. He also indicated to me in a meeting on July second that he was unaware of my communication with the board. And we all know that that's not true. The question of honesty persisted. Although my title is that of Assistant Superintendent, I have been banished from the cabinet-level activities and board meeting executive sessions, as you are aware. You may not be aware that between the meeting on July second and October twenty-second, nearly four months, the superintendent had virtually no direct communication with me. He had little choice but to communicate with me around the October twenty-second transportation issues. I have been a very good sport about this situation, but this behavior is not a demonstration of a responsible leader on the part of the superintendent. I share this because it's relevant backstory to my upcoming comments, as my intention is to be as even-handed in my remarks as possible. The board has a responsibility to evaluate the superintendent. This is a statutory requirement. The board is charged with fiduciary responsibility as well. Both of these considerations are paramount, as you consider an extension of the superintendent's contract at this juncture. Without benefit of an evaluation and without appropriate length of time for the superintendent to demonstrate his leadership and performance, that you would rush into an extension of the contract is irresponsible and may be seen as a dereliction of your duty and responsibility to the public and this community. In the bigger context of promoting annual teacher evaluations as a concept I wholeheartedly support, wouldn't a servant leader lead by example? In this morning's Herald Bulletin, the superintendent emphasized the need for, quote, "merit and performance," end quote, as related to teacher evaluations and pay. Wouldn't those same considerations apply here? A servant leader would not promote nor allow such a double standard to exist and knowingly contribute-
Mrs. Clark, that's your three minutes if you conclude your statements, please.
I don't think so, because I time it several times.
Mrs. Clark, it's three minutes, right here. Please conclude, conclude your statement.
Thank you. Are you the only one keeping time, Mr. Gale?
Uh, Mrs. Clark, please have a seat.
Mrs. Clark is being commissioned, likes some time, and she's a special employee. While what she is saying is fairly uncomfortable for all of us, for all of us, I think that in light of her long-term position, uh, and the importance of what we're doing, as mentioned as a vagabond, what is traditionally is done, that she should be heard at least for another three or four minutes.
I won't take that long. I timed myself several times.
I asked for the board's support on my statements.
The only concern there, Mrs. Stewart, is that, uh, currently at three minutes and fifteen seconds, are we to extend that same benefit to everyone?
Anyone who has sort of staff during this, in this corporation, obviously, certainly would report it.
Okay. Well, in the interest of time, please-
I will.
-conclude what you, you have prepared.
Thank you. As elected officials, you have the power to make decisions, but you also have the responsibility to make those decisions in the best interest of the corporation and community. A decision to extend the superintendent's contract now at the eleventh hour before new members join the board is not representative at all of this board's mantra of transparency and public trust. The superintendent is only five months into a three-year contract. There's plenty of time to consider an extension, and that time is not now. Do not lock the corporation into this financial commitment absent demonstrated performance by the superintendent. Let's not be another corporation that finds itself in that situation. Terry Thompson would be the only beneficiary to such a decision. This is not the appropriate time. It is not appropriate to extend without the benefit of evaluation. It is untimely and overcommitment of the corporation's financial resources to lock in the superintendent's salary until 2019. Gosh, even the mayor gives an evaluation of sorts from the electorate every four years. Please consider taking your statutory responsibility of the superintendent's evaluation and contract extension seriously and complete the process at the appropriate time with fidelity, honesty, and transparency. Do not have more egg on your face because you did not do your due diligence. Thank you.
Next, we have, uh, Mr. Bill Watson.
No, what way to start off? Thank you, board, and I appreciate this opportunity to come before you again, uh, on such a critical issue as the extension of, uh, Superintendent Thompson's contract to five years and make him whole in respect to those things that may have been overlooked, uh, in the contract language. Uh, I appeared before this board body five months ago when Mr. Thompson was made superintendent, and, uh, it was my assertion at that time that he'd be given a five-year term to effect his plan for Anderson Community Schools. I think it's only fair and right that once a professional who is giving his time to a corporation and to a city and a community, that he be allowed a full opportunity for success, because it's, uh, for him and everything he's done, it's about the kids, it's about the students. And irrespective of what he may hear tonight, as principals of Anderson High School, he has set the standard and the bar very high for an administrator. And once he was elected or, or made superintendent of this corporation, he went full force to set a plan into action. It's unfortunate that in a community of this size, uh, but it is also, uh, a byproduct. We're not always all going to agree, and we may have differing opinions. But with respect to that, I think this man has demonstrated on more than one occasion, uh, his forthrightness. I think that he has demonstrated on more than one occasion his passion for education. I think he's demonstrated on more than one occasion, uh, his professionalism and his love for children and education. Therefore, it is my assertion and hope and prayer that this board body gives him the opportunity for a full five years and effecting of his plan of education for Anderson Community Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Uh, next, we have Shelley Wagner.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Wagner, and I reside at ninety-six, ninety-six forty-seven Baby Court in Indianapolis. I'm a third-generation graduate of the Anderson Community School Corporation. And my family came to Indiana from Virginia. They were attracted to jobs from the, um, Industrial Revolution, and they called Indiana home. I didn't learn that until actually living in Virginia myself. I moved away in nineteen eighty-eight. And as a graduate, I, um, started out teaching. I was a teacher for fourteen years, and I, um, became an administrator following those fourteen years. I worked in three very, very large school districts in the East Coast, um, some of the largest in the United States, in fact. And each of those school districts is marked by long-tenured superintendents, and they celebrate success and excellence in education because of the long tenure of those superintendents. And I want you to understand that my background then and my lens through which I see the world is shaped by those experiences. Um, Roland Borth talks about the single most important factor that affects education and performance of teachers and administrators and students, and that is the relationships of those adults in the building. And Mr. Thompson has worked very diligently since coming into office to build relationships. Um, and I do think some of that work started as principal at Anderson High School, but he's carried that energy and that spirit and that commitment to Anderson Community Schools and brought that into our community. We know that we have to have a strong foundation upon which to build our, um, and celebrate our schools. We can do that, and we can recognize Anderson Schools as a woke-class community once again through his leadership and guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Uh, next, we have Judy Schaefer.
Good evening. My name is Judy Schaefer. I reside at three oh five South Plankhurst Lane in Yorktown. I'm here representing all Anderson Community Schools principals. I, I spoke to each principal, um, either before break or today, and we all have our full support in supporting the additional contract years. Mr. Thompson has had a year and a half to prove himself in Anderson, and in that time, he has truly brought that community into the Anderson Community Schools Corporation. Um, and countless of stories given to, to me by many of the principals, building relationships, respect. Daily, he demonstrates his passion for students. He goes out of his way to go to the students' homes, talk to parents, um, we, uh, at all the community events with his wife, um, supports all the principals in many of the difficult issues. Uh, we've all had a story given to me about difficult issues that he helped solve and supported the principals. Um, to me, there is no surprises when I'm talking to Mr. Thompson. He is honest with me, um, and a lot of the people have the same standards that I said. Everyone knows where he stands, or each and every person knows where they stand with Mr. Thompson, and I find that very refreshing. Um, Eric Jensen is an educational researcher, and he states, and please, in this, uh, quote, it's students, but I think in this instance, we can definitely use this quote and put patrons, students, teachers, faculty. Students don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And I think Mr. Thompson has definitely proven that he cares about Anderson Community Schools and the students. I think he puts students number one, and that's exactly where it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Uh, next, we have Laura Prenchaw.
Good evening, and thank you to the school board for allowing us to speak tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of extending the contract for our superintendent, Terry Thompson. Terry continues to actively promote and sell our school corporation in such a positive manner. He's visible throughout the community. Terry and his wife have visited many local churches recently in attempt to become involved in our city and in attempt to get to know our community. I believe that Mr. Thompson is the best person for this job to promote not only our schools, but also promote the city of Anderson. I encourage you to extend his contract so his vision and long-term plan of our students can be achieved. I truly feel that Mr. Thompson has the best interest at heart of our students, and I applaud him for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Prenchaw. Next, we have Patrick Hill.
Thank you, board, and people on the tenants. I'd like to speak today, not about Mr. Thompson, because he's obviously a good PR person who does a lot of good work in the community and actually is an Anderson High School principal, like, very easy to approach and talk with. But this is about a contract. This is about extending a contract, a contract that's already been signed. Now, we do have statements out there that we are full, in full support of evaluations. Well, as a, as a principal, he had a year, but as a superintendent, he has a very short time. And there's no job that I'm, I'm aware of that we don't go through unless you're a very high-ranking professional, maybe like a doctor, but even they have reviews from time to time, that you don't get some sort of review and there's some sort of, of steps, some sort of implementation that's been built to, to get that. Now, as a business, as a business person, Mr. Gale, you understand that, they understand, you know, contracts. And when you do a business contract, you don't necessarily walk in and right after it's done and say, "Oh, yeah, let's just go ahead and extend that," because you want time to evaluate. You want time to see how things work and make corrections as they're necessary. So I would advise this board to really consider what you're looking at here. Is the proper evaluation been in place with Mr. Thompson in this short period of time?
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Uh, next, we have Ryan Glaze.
Uh, Ryan Glaze, uh, ten four hundred Katie Lane, Salomon, Indiana, by the way, here. Anyway, um, I wanted to echo some of the positive comments that others have made, um, on behalf of Mr. Thompson. I wanted to speak a little bit about in the last five months, my work with him. I feel one, I feel great to be part of, of his team, because he's building such a great, he's building such a great opportunity to build community within.
Uh, Mr. Rudebrich, could you swap microphones, please?
Yeah, I don't think this one will work. I was just getting ready to sing.
Test. This one works, I'll give you this one.
I think we'll do a trio.
Okay, good deal. All right. Uh, I just wanted to talk about how he's building community and reaching out to the community and, and, and building the, all, all, to building the, the one Anderson concept. And, and I respect that and I appreciate that, and I appreciate how he's encouraging us to be better servants within our community that we work in and many of us live in. And I also want to talk a little bit about, um, about working for him and how he empowers me to be a better administrator and, and better worker, and I appreciate that. He gives me the latitude to do a lot of things, and, and I appreciate that and I respect that. And, uh, sometimes in leadership, that, that doesn't always happen, but I do appreciate that, uh, from Mr. Thompson. So I think for consistency's sake, I, I believe it's important that we, we look at Mr. Thompson's contract and particularly as we are, are trying to move forward and the good things that are already happening in our district, I believe that we can continue to make those things happen, um, under Mr. Thompson's leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Glaze. Uh, the next name, um, I'm having a little trouble reading it. It appears to be Anthony, maybe? Is that it? My apologies.
That's all right. It's my right.
Mine's worse, I promise.
My name's Anthony Harris. Uh, I reside at two thousand and seven Wagon Wheel Court in Anderson, Indiana. And I'd just like to say this to Mrs. Clark. I understand that there's an issue, and I would very much like to one day take you and, uh, Mr. Thompson to dinner on me, because we do need to get together and we do need to get along. But, but the reason that I'm standing here today is, is not out of disrespect for anybody, but out of respect for somebody who came in and he kept his word. If, you may not know it, but there were many of us that asked him after, uh, the fiasco that we had, uh, last year when we, uh, didn't get, uh, superintendent. And so we, we, uh, pursued him to run, because he had done so much, so well at our high school, and we really didn't want to lose him at the high school. The high school changed, and we had a beautiful lady there before him, but she didn't get the support that he got because he brought his whole team in. And I think that with his team, he has changed this city tremendously, and I think that if we want to talk about something, uh, that he's done and talk about evaluating someone, uh, part of the things that he did on last year before he became superintendent were like superintendent like. Uh, if we had to use the grades that he had the high school on last year, we would have got a C, we would have had a B. And I, and I think that we need to look at, uh, allowing him to try to, uh, work the program out. Our, our kids are the most important thing that we have to us. I, I left the, uh, kids conference down in Indianapolis, and I was so glad to see so many of our, uh, volunteers as well as paid workers down to the, uh, uh, twenty fourteen kid camp, uh, conference. But, but the only reason that I left and, and brave this was because I wanted to go and sleep in my good room, was that it was important to me. Uh, I think Terry means a lot to this community already, and I think that we need to pull together and learn how to work. I'm, I'm a union man. I still, I've been retired, I still pay union dues. I think we need to find a way to work through- I think we need to find a way to work through this, because the one thing that he says that I agree with is all about the kids. It, it's not about, it's not about me, it's not about the way I get along with him or anybody else. It's about our children. Our children are suffering. And we need to find ways to reach them and to help them, uh, become academic achievers. And if we don't, we have no future here. You know, I, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not going to politic. We know that sometimes when people come in and politics get in the way because, "I don't want you here," and then when you get here, we don't get along, but now we need to fix that. And I, I want you to, to just promise me that if she says, "Okay, we'll go to lunch." But we need to fix this. We need to get, get together and make Anderson somebody's city.
Thank you, Anthony Harris. Uh, next we have Todd Cowan.
Hi, my name is Todd Cowan. Um, I'm a teacher. I live at seventeen oh three Falls Court in Anderson. Graduate of Highland High School, all the way from Park Place Elementary. I've lived here all my life. I've spent many years at AU as a student, wonderful years. I love this city as much as anybody here. And I worked at Guide Corporation for almost fifteen years, and I learned some very important things before I came to teach. And I want to challenge you with these things. I've learned a lot tonight listening to you. I didn't prepare any remarks because I just found out about this, and maybe that's better. But what I've learned from my GM experience was that management by itself is horrible at dealing with people. And the union by itself is horrible at making things work. But together, they have an option. Each one is one hand on the same body. If either one cuts the wrist of the other, the whole body dies. And that is the last thing that I can conscience seeing happen in my town, in my colony. We cannot let that happen. I saw good things and bad things about union and management in, in GM, and we saw the failures of stupid union and stupid management. We saw what happens. We are all very afraid to repeat that by having unions and management make the same mistakes as the past by being enemies. We can't afford it. I think we all know that. Unity is the only way we survive. Now, I came here listening, and I've heard good things that I did not know about Mr. Thompson. We've never met, I've never worked in his building. I've heard many things that are not good. And I'm deserving judgment. As a teacher, I come before you in fear and trepidation, because the environment I feel, I perceive, is very punitive. Now, if that's not the fact, it's my perception, great. I want to get along. I want what everyone says they want. But we're in a political environment, which is a problem, but it's something we have to deal with. The community sent a message with the elections, which is good and bad. We have to succeed together. And what I see, what I'm afraid I'm seeing is too heavy a hand. We're talking about kids. We don't serve kids. You guys don't serve kids directly. That's not your role. A principal doesn't serve kids directly. That's not a principal's role. The teachers are a big part of this, direct service, direct caregivers. And I, I feel like I have to say something for them. Let's not disenfranchise our teachers. We care. We have a bad reputation somehow, but we're busting our guts and our hearts in the classroom with things that the state don't...
You can conclude where you're...
Things that the state are forcing on all of us. We are not enemies, but the person who makes us enemies is my enemy. So please, no matter what happens, let's not be enemies. Please. That goes for the people incoming, goes for you and the, and the rest of us, including the union. Let's be together.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan. Next we have Andrea Kirkpatrick.
I'm Andrea Kirkpatrick. My address is twelve fourteen Francis Lane. Two of my children are sophomores at AHS, and my youngest is in seventh grade at Highland. My husband and I have been AHS, or ACS supporters since two thousand and four, when our oldest children entered kindergarten. Since that time, we have observed and directly experienced the effect of a multitude of policy revisions, building adjustments, grade rearrangements, budget cuts, teacher shifting, administrative replacements, and direct threats to beloved ACS programs and activities. Many families like ours, tired of the never-ending changes and unrest within the corporation, chose to leave ACS for seemingly greener pastures. We were tempted many times to find a more stable educational environment for our three honor students, but we have purposefully decided to stay with Anderson Community Schools. We are still here today because of the overwhelming number of dedicated ACS professionals we have encountered, teachers who have continually had our children's best interests at heart, and administrators with an unwavering dedication to educational excellence. Terry Thompson is one of these dedicated professionals who has given us a reason to continue to call ACS home. For more than a year, I've had the pleasure of getting to know Mr. Thompson, and I've found him to have not only a dedication and passion for education, but also a proven track record and a concrete plan for ACS. I stand on my record as an active and loyal supporter of ACS teachers and administration when I respectfully and fervently plead for consistency and time, consistency of leadership, and time for those leaders to implement and develop new ideas for the benefit of our students. I implore the board to vote to extend Mr. Thompson's contract. His zealous, tenacious, intentional, and inspirational approach to leading Anderson High School and now Anderson Community Schools will certainly lead us into a new era of growth, into new opportunities for student achievement, and into a welcome season of strong, stable leadership.
Thank you, Mrs. Kirkpatrick. And last but not least, uh, Mr. Tom Fortner.
Good evening. Tom Fortner, two two eight North Church Circle, Noblesville, Indiana. Speaking on behalf of the Anderson Federation of Teachers. The AFT would first like to say that our comments are not directed at the superintendent, Mr. Thompson. The AFT does have concerns with the school board and their process for deciding to extend the contract of any superintendent. All administrative personnel are evaluated on a yearly basis. Currently, all first-time teachers in ACS are evaluated through the Par Intern Program. This is a two-year program to determine if these new employees are of the caliber we want for our students in the school system. The custodians and secretaries are evaluated each year also. Further, a joint ACS AFT committee is working on a possible yearly evaluation plan for all teachers. Our point is, the position of superintendent should be evaluated annually, and then decisions about contract extensions should be made. To our knowledge, this has not occurred. Deciding this early into the tenure of a superintendent does not make good financial sense for the district either. For example, what if there was a person in the position of superintendent whose contract was extended early in their tenure that was shortly found thereafter by the board not to be working? The board would either have to live with that person in the position or buy out their contract, which would be costly to the school system. And this has actually occurred in some school districts. The AFT believes a better approach would be to have yearly evaluations in place for the position of superintendent. Then in the last year of their contract, a decision can be made to either extend that contract or let it expire. This would provide the school board with a strong case for or against an extension, as well as avoiding the possible cost of a contract buyout. The AFT thanks you for listening and hopes you will give our comments due consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Fortner. That concludes the public hearing, uh, with regard to the superintendent contract, uh, proposed adjustments. Um, let's kind of take a motion to adjourn. A motion by, uh, Mr. Wong, and a second by Mrs. Shaley. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.